Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Galt City Council. Roll call, please, Liz. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Campion?
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Here.
We'll have a moment of silent prayer and then the flag salute. Councilmember Cruz will lead us in the flag salute.
Sir. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Liz, would you please read the video statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West cable systems. Tonight's meeting can also be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any agenda approval additions and or deletions? Okay. Okay, and we'll get on to the presentation. Our first proclamation is proclamation for Tiny Smiles. I'm going to have Liz read it, and then I'm going to present it to Pastor Rick and all of your family, whoever wants to come down. Anything you'd like to say, we'd love to hear what you have to say.
Okay, a proclamation by the City Council of the City of Galt, California, recognizing congenital heart defect awareness week, February 7th through 14, 2014. Whereas congenital heart defects are the most frequently occurring birth defects and the leading cause of birth defect-related deaths worldwide, and whereas every 40,000 babies are born in the United States with congenital heart defects and some are not diagnosed until months or years after birth, and whereas a disproportionately small amount of funding is available for congenital heart defect research and support, and whereas congenital heart defect awareness week provides an opportunity for families whose lives have been affected to celebrate life and to remember loved ones lost, to honor dedicated health professionals, and to meet others and know they are not alone, and whereas the establishment of congenital heart defect awareness week will also provide the opportunity to share experience and information with the public and the media in order to raise public awareness about congenital heart defects. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Galt, California, that February 7th through 14, 2014, be declared congenital heart defect awareness week, that the City of Galt community support the second annual Tiny Smiles event on February 8th, and all citizens be encouraged to increase awareness, education, and services for congenital heart defects.
Thank you, Liz.
Mayor, Council, City Manager Chief, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. We certainly appreciate the city's support of the Tiny Smiles event. Most of you probably know, our son passed away December 27th of 2011. He was one of those 40,000 kids. It's said that one out of every 100 kids born will be born with a congenital heart disease, and some will live to be one year old. Ours did not. He died at six months old. So we have established this race. It's a five-kilometer race. We have a half marathon and also a kids' race, and we've been lucky enough to get lots of support from the city and outside agencies as well. So we hope this show will be even more successful than last year. We're hoping to have somewhere between 800 participants, but we will see. So thank you so much for all of your help and all your support over the years.
Not too late to sign up.
Sign up. You can sign up at tinysmilesrace.org. And Friday, we're asking everybody to wear red, and certainly if you come out to the event, either wear a race shirt or wear red as well in honor of folks that have speech days. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, now we have the McFarland Ranch annual report. Ladies?
Good evening. This is kind of a special occasion for us because we've come to say thank you. When we came to you each year saying we needed help, we weren't kidding. We did. And last year especially, when we needed funding, we said we needed it especially for the equipment barn that we were hoping to complete. And you came through, and as a result, we have now a very nice equipment barn that will hold all the equipment that is needed out there, tractors, tractor parts. It's just unbelievable. There's even a section now where the caretaker and anyone who's working on maintenance will have a shop area with all the tools at their disposal to work with them and to have a place to repair and keep things looking great. What is so wonderful is that it's secure, it's going to be airtight. It's just absolutely wonderful. And since all of you could not be there, we have brought it to you tonight. I think when you see this PowerPoint program, you'll agree with me that you could take a group of people, have a plan, be organized, and let them cooperate, and wow, do you ever get success. It was just amazing to see a slab of cement with some two-by-fours sitting on it and a stack of, oh dear, eight-by, six-by-eight, what do you call them?
Five-wood.
But you put your nail on the two-by-fours.
Five-wood?
Can't think of it right now, but anyway, the walls that have to go on to make the wall. You can tell I'm no carpenter. And to see it all there in parts and see these people standing around just looking and you thought, oh, boy, this is going to be some fun. And to see it all come together by the end of the day to the point where it is, it is just incredible. And right now, it's complete. What you have in your little booklet shows it at the end of that day, but now it is totally done. The roof is on, it's painted, it's working, and it's terrific. And thank you, thank you, thank you. Got to mention one thing that's very important. If everything hadn't been prefabbed and ready to go, none of this could have happened. And of course, you know who did that. It was Ron Jacobson and his brother Francis. They prefabbed every single piece of lumber so that when everybody came, everything was laid out for them. They organized it, and it's a tribute to them, too. As the PowerPoint takes you beyond the first stage, so you're getting to the floor of the... Got to share a little something. We had a wedding out there, and it rained. We weren't expecting the rain. No building around the... Out in the ranch, except our new equipment barn. And by luck, we haven't moved anything in yet, so that's taking the reception of the wedding area. Awesome. But that is what is out there now. Thank you so much.
That looks great.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay. Public comment, Liz?
Under Government Code, Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. And I have no speaker sheet.
Thank you, Liz. We're into the information and consent calendar. Liz, would you mind reading the three?
We have three items. First one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of January 21st, 2014. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. And number three, approval of the proclamation for Tiny Smiles.
Do I have a motion?
Move the items.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Council, Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
The motion passes with all members in favor. Councilmembers Powers, Singleton, Payne, and Cruz.
And you want to explain for a second, Steve, why we have to do that now? So people want, you know...
Sure. There's a change to the Brown Act that became effective on January 1st that requires on any action that the city council takes, that the clerk or the mayor needs to report the action and the vote of each member of the council.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to the 2030 general plan update, 2013 to 2021 housing element. Mr. Winkler, or?
Good evening. That's me. But I'd be happy to let Steve take over. Good evening. My name is Chris Ryan, City Planner Planner with the city's Community Development Department. I am pleased to present to you tonight for adoption the 2013-2021 Housing Element. We will be asking you tonight to conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution approving the project negative declaration and approving an amendment to the 2030 general plan by adopting the housing element. If the council adopts the housing element tonight, we will be submitting it to HCD within the required time limits, which will put the city on an eight-year housing, an eight-year housing element year cycle, which means the next housing element will be due in 2021. The city hired Minter Harnish to complete the 2013-2021 Housing Element, and Chelsea Norton, the project manager for Minter, will provide a brief presentation on it. After her presentation, she and I will be available to answer any questions you might have, and I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Chelsea Norton. I'm the project manager with Minter Harnish, and I've had the pleasure to work with Chris and your Community Development Department staff over the past several months on the housing element update. We're excited to be here tonight to wrap this up. And so I'm just going to give a quick overview, and then, like Chris said, I'm happy to answer any questions. So the housing element is an element of your general plan. It's the city's plan to meet your existing and your projected housing needs over the eight-year planning period. So if the council adopts the housing element tonight, you won't be looking at another update for eight years. We started the housing element update earlier this year in the summer, and in August, August 8th, we had a workshop with the Planning Commission. It was a community workshop. After that, we had a workshop with the city council on September 3rd. We then released the public review draft housing element on September 4th, and on the 17th of that month, we got authorization from you to submit the housing element to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, for their review of your element. Sixty days later, at the end of their review period, the state had no comments on the draft housing element, and they issued a conditional approval letter that says if you adopt the housing element as they've reviewed it, that they'll find that it complies with state law. So we're here tonight. The housing element that you reviewed last September, it remains unchanged from that version. The state had no comments, so we made no changes to that draft of the housing element. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the content or the process.
Questions, council? Okay. Did such a good job the first time?
Yes.
Do we have to do a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to open a public hearing if anybody has any comments. Are there any comments? Speaker sheet tonight? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'll call for you reading. Could you read the...
Conduct the public hearing. And number two, adopt a resolution approving the California Environmental Quality Act, initial study, negative declaration, and approving an amendment to the Galt 2030 general plan, adopting the 2013 through 2021 housing element.
Do I have a motion?
So...
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
The motion unanimously passes with councilmembers Singleton, Payne, Cruz, and Powers all in favor.
Thank you. Okay, now we're to City Council Office, discretionary fund purchase of cat traps in Salim. As council knows, last week, there was a group here that was called Feline Health and Wellness Organization, and they do a lot for the benefit of the city here to keep down the population of cats in town. And they're a great group of volunteers that go out, sometimes in the middle of the night, and trap cats and take them into the SPCA and have them tested, and if they are diseased or do have something wrong with them, then they are not put back out into the wild. But when they're put back out, they are fully taken care of so they can live, you know, their lives out, out where they are. And so I'm asking you to approve, I think it's about $395 for five traps for the Feline Health and Wellness Organization. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Some motion?
I move to approve the allocation of up to $500 to purchase five cat traps for the Feline Health and Wellness Organization.
A second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
The motion unanimously passes with councilmembers Singleton, Payne, Cruz, and Powers all in favor.
Thank you. Now we're at the Treasurer's Office. The Treasurer should report for the period ending December 2013, and that's you, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to comment and say I'm pleased to see so many Liberty Ranch high school students here tonight and learn about city government. And I know you have to be here for 90 minutes. I think you're going to get out early, okay? So...
Well, we could drag it out.
You want to drag it out? Okay, all right. We can drag it out. I promise, I won't speak long. I just kind of want to talk over some of the things that have occurred during the months of October, November, and December as far as the investments for the city. Couple things. During, one in October, one in November, I purchased some callable agency, agencies that we were able to get a little bit higher rate because rates did, in fact, tick up a little bit during that time. So a five-year annual step-up agency, what that's callable every quarter, I was able to get 1.35% and 1.5%. So believe it or not, those rates are actually pretty good. Another thing during the end of November and December, I purchased, I took $1 million of our portfolio and purchased some, what I call, non-local CDs. These are CDs, certificates of deposit, that I was able to get throughout the country. I broke them up in $250,000 increments, so they are all FDIC insured. And those two-year CDs range from .7 to .8 with an average of .75. Those banks that I put that money in, each $250,000, was Discover Bank, Ally Bank, Sally Mae Bank, and also the First Bank of Puerto Rico. Now, if there's any question, I just want to stop it right here. Question being, is, does FDIC insure money that is in the bank for, was it First Bank of Puerto Rico? The answer is yes. Okay? So don't worry about that. It is all FDIC insured. It's always, I always have to tell you where we are as far as interest earnings, and it's through the first six months, the city has earned $124,848.17 in interest. Believe it or not, this is slightly higher than last year. Okay? So, and in comparison to prior years, this is extremely low. We all know that because interest rates are low. So that's, I just want to say that. And then, lastly, for the yield, for portfolio yield for December of 2013, we earned .73%. So almost three-quarters of a percent during the month of December. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you have. Otherwise, I ask for your approval of the Treasurer's Report ending December 2013.
Questions, council?
Have no questions.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry?
Motion to approve.
Okay. That was great. I move in second. Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Singleton, Payne, Cruz, and Powers all in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, City Manager's Office, the subject is Strategic Planning Process, and that's to you, Mr. Bowman.
It's to me. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My pleasure to present this item this evening. The city has engaged in a strategic planning process for the last several years, and we've utilized various facilitators for the past three-plus years. We've used Maryland Snyder, but it's been a while, and we've been doing this for a while, so we thought it would be a good opportunity to bring this back to the council, see if the council is satisfied with the current process. We listed a number of different options that the council may want to consider going forward, and just to get some feedback and some direction to continue the strategic planning process. Staff generally is supportive of the strategic planning process, think it's provided great value to the organization to be able to set priorities and goals and be able to report those back to the community on a regular basis. But there are a lot of different ways that that can be accomplished, and so there's some various ideas or suggestions and alternatives that we put on here. Essentially, the current process is we meet every six months as department heads and city council members, and we go through and take a look at our mission, statement, our vision for the community, values, and then we establish three-year goals, typically four to five major three-year initiatives. And then within each goal, we establish objectives, ways that we're going to accomplish and meet those objectives over the next six months. And we also go through a SWOT analysis where we take a look at our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats out there so we can plan for the future. Then we report back on a monthly basis in council meetings. We read to the community how well we're accomplishing the various objectives we've established. We put on our city website the status of those objectives, and we also take a look at the accomplishments over the prior six-month period. And so we're very transparent and open with the community about what we're doing, and it helps, I think, the city council and staff all get on the same page with similar goals and priorities, the ability to objectively look back at how well we're moving forward in accomplishing those. So like I said before, I think the process has been very successful. I think we've made a lot of progress and achieved a lot of significant accomplishments for the city. And it is a best practice for municipalities to engage in a strategic planning process. But again, there are a variety of ways that that can be accomplished, and so I listed in this report four, five, or six different alternatives that the council may want to take a look at, so I'll just go through those very briefly with the city council. The first is to simply continue with the current process, current facilitator, but the council may wish to change the frequency. Like I said, right now, we meet every six months. Certainly, the council may wish to take a look at whether we want to do it just once a year. Our recommendation is to, the six-month seems to be working well. Every time, anytime you lengthen that process, then sometimes things, the objectives get pushed to the end, and you're not as effective in what you do. But certainly, there are a lot of cities that do an annual process, so that is an alternative. It does save a little bit of money because you're not doing it quite so often. The second option we list here is to continue with the current facilitator on an annual basis, but have staff provide facilitation at the semi-annual interview, interval. This continues essentially the same process. We're still meeting every six months, but we save the cost of having facilitator come back every six months, and staff would lead on the interim intervening kind of six-month period. Don't think it's the, maybe the optimal way of doing it. I think having the facilitator is preferred by staff, but certainly, we could accomplish that, and maybe at the six-month mark, it wouldn't be as formal of a setting. It would be more of a look back on the last six months, how well we did, and focus on the objectives, maybe not do the full SWOT analysis that we've been doing, but so it's kind of a little bit of a hybrid that the council may want to take a look at. The third option that we list here is to, if the council wishes, we could not use a facilitator at all, and staff could attempt to facilitate those meetings on an annual or a semi-annual basis. Again, I don't think that's the preferred approach. I think the best practice is to use... I think the best practice is to use a facilitator, a third-party facilitator, when you're doing strategic planning. It helps to have somebody come in and guide that process, but certainly, if the council desired it, we could attempt to do our best with facilitating those workshops. The next option is to take a look at using a new facilitator, different facilitator, who might bring some different ideas, a different process that we can take a look at. Typically, facilitators do have their own process, and so it likely would change the way we've done it, but we could certainly talk with that facilitator, find one that the council is happy with, and then talk to that individual about the things that we like about the current process and things we may wanna change going forward. So, if the council was interested in changing things up a little bit, in whatever way, certainly, that's an alternative the council may want to take a look at. And then, once we selected a new facilitator, we could reevaluate that after the first year, after the first couple of years, to see how well that is going. And like I said, we have used different facilitators over the years. I think, I can think of at least two other ones we've utilized, but the current facilitator we had used for about three years now. So, that's kind of where we are. Obviously, one of the options is to continue with the way we've been doing it, with the current facilitator, the current process, and just keep the same things intact. I think staff's certainly open to whatever the council wants to take a look at. I think the fact that we just recently did the new three-year goals, that we wouldn't necessarily wanna start over with that process, but a new facilitator may be able to come in and kind of pick up where we left off, and without significant disruption if the council wanted to go in that direction. And then, the final option is just to stop doing strategic planning entirely. Some cities don't really have a strategic planning process, and they just incorporate goals and objectives as part of the budget process. I don't think that's the best practice. I don't think it's what I would recommend, but certainly, if the council wanted to do that, that is an option that's available for consideration. The cost of doing the strategic planning is about $3,800 for the facilitation. We do that every six months, and so, to the extent that the council wanted to not do strategic planning or do it at a staff level, that's the amount of money that you could save. If you wanted to change facilitators, my expectation is the cost would be about the same. You're not probably gonna save much money, and we would look to find somebody that would do it for about the same price. So, that, you know, wouldn't be a cost savings or a cost increase if the council wanted to change facilitators. And that's pretty much my presentation. If council has any questions, the staff, happy to answer them. Otherwise, we would look to the council to provide some direction to staff on the preferred strategic planning process.
Councilmember Cruz?
Am I that transparent?
Yes, you are.
I think one of the things we're looking at here is that the current process, at least in my opinion, works. The issue, I think the majority of us were having was facilitator was leaning more toward the tail of the hen. Seriously, when you say you can't go to the bathroom until I give you a break, it's like, excuse me, I thought we were over seven years of age here. Just my two cents worth.
Barbara, Mike, you wanna go first?
Ladies first.
Okay. I actually like the process that we have, and I think sometimes we need someone to keep us aligned, to be objective. And I was curious, though, did staff have an opportunity to weigh in on this process? And did they?
On the strategic planning process? I think we've heard a variety of comments, you know, over the past several years, that I think overall, the process is efficient. We get through in a relatively short period of time. But yeah, sometimes it can be a little bit stifling. There's some rules and things, but sometimes you give up. If you, you know, there's certain compromise and sacrifices that you give. If you want something that's a little bit, maybe not as structured, then typically, the process is gonna take much longer and may not be as efficient. And so, there's, you know, sometimes there's sacrifice that goes along with one or the other. Either you're gonna wanna process that's relatively quick, efficient, effective, or one that's, you know, maybe a little bit looser, and it just depends on the style that the council is interested in doing. Like I said, we've used other facilitators in the past. Some have been successful, some have not. We've seen strategic planning meetings that have gotten us out of hand because there hasn't been the structure that comes along with the current facilitator. And so, you know, I think it's just a matter of really what the council. I think the staff is willing and able to work with whatever facilitator we use, and it's really a kind of a preference for the council. And if the council does wanna make a change, then I would suggest as much feedback, you can provide us with the type of facilitator that you're looking for and what you wanna accomplish as part of the process. That'd make it easier for us to go out and find that facilitator that you guys are really looking, you know, for.
Okay. Vice Mayor Singleton?
I'm familiar with that.
Are you? Sorry.
No, the only other comment I would make about that, I really like the way that the council and the staff work together. We get in groups that includes both the council and the staff, and we have an opportunity to listen to each other, and I think that's something that she's sort of established for us, as well as reviewing our strengths and our weaknesses. Makes us feel good most of the time. So, I'm happy with her. Don't have any complaints. I think we've been accomplishing our goals really well, and Cruz is in the pudding.
Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, this process we use, we've completed probably, I wanna say, and I'm just guessing, 98% of our goals. And I know our facilitator is rather passionate, and there's nothing wrong with that. It's because she's passionate is probably part of the reason why we've reached 98% of those goals. The other few percent are just goals that have been, haven't been completed or not reached yet because of whatever reason. I don't see any reason why, you know, you have to have that structure, and I think it works. It works well, and that's why we don't have any drama here, is I think because all the department heads and council get together, we work issues, and we know what is expected of each other. So, I think it works well. Now, I don't see why we cannot speak with the facilitator and remind her that we are not seven-year-olds, and I don't see anything wrong with that. I'm sure our city manager would have no problem doing that. And so, I'm very happy with the process because it does keep all the department heads, all the council, together in one room, and we work whatever issues we have, or disagreements of one another. It makes us work it out, and then we're heading for the same goal instead of different directions. So, I'm good with what we have.
Okay. Well, this is gonna be a good one because I really do appreciate the every six months, and I do like the camaraderie that we have with staff. I personally would like a new facilitator. It, to me, redundancy, I just don't like the redundancy of it all. And I think that now that we do have the three-year plan, if we had a new facilitator that looked at all the parameters of what we've got doing, I don't think it would be hard for someone else to pick it up and run with it, so to speak. My personal opinion is I'd like it to change up a little. Councilmember Cruz, sorry.
I wanna qualify something here. I'm not suggesting we eliminate the facilitator. I am, however, in favor of getting a hold of it, as Councilwoman Singleton mentioned, letting her know, you know, you need to soften up a little bit. We do work well as a team. Acknowledge that and take advantage of that. But cracking the whip just doesn't work with me.
Okay, so it looks like the three of you wanna keep the same person, so, you know, I'll go with whatever the council wants. I...
Do you have to talk to your opinion, Madam?
No, no, I'm not open my opinion, but I, you know, there's three of you that would like to keep it this way, and I don't have a problem with that. We're a team, correct?
I'd still too. I can just give her enough, a chance to change her, lighten up a little, as you could say.
Well, if you would mind. I move option five with the caveat or addition to that being that the city manager talked with her and advised her that we would like her to lighten up. A little bit, a little bit.
Okay, you guys good with that? Okay, so that's, okay. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Excuse me, Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Okay, this motion passes unanimously with council members Singleton, Payne, Cruz, and Powers all in favor.
Okay. Public Works Department, authorize award of on-call consultant contract for utilities and transportation support services. Is that you now?
That's me now. Chris would like to take this up. Madam Mayor, city council members, this item is to present the first in what we hope will be a series of recommendations over the next few months to help sort of streamline staff efforts to secure consultant services for a variety of short-term and perceived longer-term services that will be needed to move the city forward. And we are thinking optimistically and seeing the signs that there may be some economic recovery around the corner. We're starting to see development applications and things, and these typically come with the need for traffic studies and look, reviews of our capital improvement programs, as well as our impact fees programs, which are due for a five-year update. And so, rather than continue to do the time-intensive efforts to individually, each time we have a specific service, to do a full-blown RFP process for what might be a $30,000 contract, we've taken a little bit more of a proactive, creative approach to efficiency and identified 11 areas that we think over the next two to three years, the city might need professional consulting services, and put out a request for qualifications rather than a request for proposals, and have them identify areas of expertise that they would be interested in providing on-call services to the city. And our long-term goal would be to perhaps get two or more consultants in each of the various disciplines, or consultants that might be multidisciplinary, so that if one was busy or otherwise engaged and we had a short-term need, that we'd have one or two additional consultants that might be in a position to provide short-term services, and do all that through sort of a master solicitation process. And we've had a good response to that. We've had quite a number of proposals that would address all of the 11 areas that are outlined in the staff report. Tonight, we're taking the first step. We do have a couple of short-term needs to look at our utility fees and our impact fees as part of the plan, which want to keep the plan upgraded, and look at our utility rates as part of the financing plan. And then, again, we're due for our five-year review of our impact fees for both water, sewer, storm, and transportation. So, we're recommending tonight that you authorize execution of the first two master on-call task order agreements. These would be multi-year, three-year, initial term agreements with the option to extend for two additional one-year terms if services are satisfactory to the city. And the first one we'd recommend is for our, what we call, wet utilities, which would be our water, wastewater, and storm drainage-type services and the related impact fee studies. And we're recommending a master task order agreement to West Yost Associates, who has a fair amount of experience doing work for the city and was rated very highly by the outside rating team we use. Also, we're recommending a similar master task order agreement with Omni Means to do transportation and traffic-related services for the city, and they also have a fair amount of experience on large projects for the city, as well as developing our current traffic model for the city. And our intent would be in the future, again, to bring back additional consultants, not only to be redundant in these areas, but also to address other areas listed in your staff report. And then, lastly, tonight, we recommend you authorize the city manager to pre-authorize initial task orders under those two agreements in amounts not to exceed $50,000 each to kick off our impact fee and our utility fee reviews, what you believe we can do within that amount. Future task orders would be developed as needs present themselves, and those would outline the scope of service to be provided, the timeframe for delivery of those services, basically creating the expectations for the city and the consultant, and then setting a fee that's commensurate for that, and that would follow our normal procurement guidelines, not in terms of solicitation, but in terms of if it's below $30,000, there would be director authority, up to $30,000 for the city manager, and then anything over $30,000 would be brought to the city council. We anticipate any standalone project that would exceed $100,000, such as designing the wastewater treatment plan upgrades, would be a full-blown solicitation that would stand on its own. So, that would be our recommendations tonight, is to authorize the first two agreements and authority for the first two task orders up to $50,000.
Council question?
Let me answer my question, too.
I just have a question. Okay, we're talking about these increments. How much do we have budgeted for this whole idea that you have here?
Well, it would basically be subject to the then-current approved budgets, which would have to have professional services line items. We're not, there's no specific amount authorized other than a cap on the first two task orders. The only way that we would be able at staff level to proceed under procurement guidelines are if there's sufficient budget in the appropriate accounts to proceed forward. If not, we'd have to bring it to council for appropriation. So, the safeguard's on, you've already approved the budget, and we're living within that budget as we make individual task order assignments.
Well, are you saying this is then the next budget? If this would be?
If you approve these two tonight, we would plan to proceed to negotiate the first two task order amounts and award those as work needs get done before June. But we do have budget currently set aside to do those studies in the current budget. As we adopt the next two-year budget, we'll be setting up future amounts anticipated and do mid-year adjustments as necessary to those. And again, anything that would exceed the amount already approved for professional services would be brought back to council.
The other question I would have, I know that we use these consultants on many of our projects, most of them, and I think there's some efficiencies to continue to use these consultants. But at the same time, I'm wondering, do we periodically check to see that they are competitive with other companies?
The answer is yes and no. Yes, we're always looking for competitive services. We are bound by a qualifications-based selection for professional services under the State Purchasing Act, and that requires that we select based on qualifications, not price. In fact, we have to select the most qualified before we typically open the price envelope, and then we're not typically allowed to look at the other envelopes. We're to negotiate with the first, most qualified consultant, and if we can't come to an agreement on price, then we can reject them and go on and open the next envelope. But it is truly not a low-bid situation. It is a qualifications-based selection. We can, price can be a factor, but it can't be the sole factor.
Do the smaller companies have the same ability to have the same competitiveness as far as quality is concerned?
Well, the beauty of sort of doing the on-call contracts in 11 different disciplinary areas is it actually opens up that there's a firm that just does survey, we need surveying services, and that might even encourage some local businesses to throw their name in the hat. And we would look to have not only the large multidisciplinary firms, but a few environmental surveying, soils testing, materials testing firms that might be from the local area rather than be sort of a national-type firm. And these first two, because of the size of the fees and the impact studies, are some well-known names in Northern California and the state, but we would expect, looking at the 34 proposals we received back to our qualifications requests, that we'll also be recommending some smaller firms.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Very good question.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Do you wanna reave the recommendation, please, Liz?
Adopt a resolution to, number one, authorize the city manager to execute multi-year on-call master task order agreements with West Yost Associates and Omni Means Engineers. Number two, authorize the city manager to develop and execute an initial task order with West Yost Associates for water, wastewater, storm drainage user and development impact fee studies in an amount not to exceed $50,000. And number three, authorize the city manager to develop and execute an initial task order with Omni Means Engineers to review and update the city's traffic impact fees in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please, Liz.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
The vote passes unanimously with council members Singleton, Payne, Cruz, and Powers all in favor.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're gonna adjourn the Galt City Council and convene to the Galt Successor Agency. Roll call, please, Liz. Roll call, please, Liz.
Board members Singleton?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Campion? Cruz?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
There's no public comment, correct? Okay, so we have the information consent agenda. Could you please read the two items, Liz?
Yes. Number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 21st, 2014, and the second one approving the successor agency warrant.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote, please. Board members Singleton?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously with board members Singleton, Payne, Cruz, and Powers voting in favor.
Thank you. Now, we're going to adjourn the Galt Successor Agency and reconvene to the Galt City Council, and we're back to you, Liz, with the city clerk's report.
Just a couple reminders, how about them Seahawks?
Okay.
Go Seahawks. Okay, that was the best.
What were they doing out there?
They were. So a couple reminders, February 12th, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. On February 13th, the Planning Commission meeting will meet here in the council chambers at 6:30. On February 17th, the city offices will be closed in honor of President's Day, and that takes us to our next council meeting on February 18th.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Comments by staff?
We had a very successful winter bird festival over the weekend. Wanted to thank my assistant Jennifer Cannell for coordinating the effort, as well as all of the volunteers. Councilmember Payne was there, Mayor Powers was there, and we had a really good turnout, great weather, just a lot of people having, learning a lot and having a good time, and look forward to another successful festival next year.
Okay, thank you. Comments by city council?
Was there any other, sorry?
I'm sorry.
Staff?
Trying to encourage Chief to jump in here. Just a quick update on a couple of things. I wasn't sure if the Seahawks were a winter bird, that they were part of the festival.
More like an eagle. Yeah, woo. Kind of a killer.
There's been a lot of council interest in how things are going on the Twin Cities Road project and roundabouts, and talked with several of you individually, and update the community as well. We are seeing some renewed activity, and we're starting to ready to actually start work out there, which is actually not a true statement, but we are having some trees removed, and utilities are being, will be following the three locations, so there'll be a lot of activity on the north shoulder of the road here in the next week or so. Walmart will be working, then beginning the following week, on some of their frontage improvements for a turn lane to their new easterly entrance. And we're going to be doing, hopefully in the next few days, some interim improvements to the westerly intersection of the frontage road, where we're getting some serious peak hour delays, particularly in the evening, and that is creating some safety concerns with traffic backing up on the 99. And we've been working with our design and our construction consultants, and we've come up with a couple of low-cost options that we think will free up some traffic, and so in the next week or so, we'll see some, we hope, some short-term improvements. We're going to restripe and provide some free right turn movements rather than queuing up for everybody having to go through the same four-way stop. And then hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we're going to try to get one last streetlight foundation forward and a streetlight turned on on what will be the new future southbound on-ramp merged down on the 99, which will allow us to open up a free right as you're headed for southbound 99 rather than having to turn left through the conflicts there, and that should actually help with the queuing back to the east as we get that opened up. So hopefully over the next two weeks, we'll see a significant improvement during the evening peak hour commute, and then by that time, hopefully we'll start to see some dirt work on the widening to the east.
Thank you.
Chief?
I think that's it.
Okay. I'll start with you, Councilmember Payne.
Okay. Couple of things. First of all, I wanted to also compliment all those who worked on the winter bird festival. It was a lot of work, and I think they did a great job. And also want to compliment the Galt Police Department. We had the cadets come and do a presentation to the youth committee on Monday, and they did a great job. I'm thinking it would be great if they did a presentation to the city council as well. They did such a good job. And the two police officers that have been working with them, they should be recognized too for their work. And then I want to talk a little bit about First Five. I'm on the First Five Advisory Committee, and I went last week to view a youth dental clinic in Elk Grove, and it was first class. And in addition to that, they are considering putting a dental health clinic in Galt for youth. And when I say for youth, it's like zero to 18. So we're hoping that that will materialize. It's got to be approved by the board of supervisors. They are also holding tomorrow at Fair Side, I believe it's at 6:30, open to the public for input to the First Five strategic plan. Little information about that, First Five is funded by the tobacco tax, Proposition 10, and they focus on programs for zero to five. So if you have an interest of anything in that age group, you might attend this public meeting at Fair Side tomorrow at 6:30. And finally, the Galt Community Alliance meets next Monday at the Parks Direct Building at 6:00. I'm done.
Thank you. She never starts me. Nobody likes starting with you.
Vice Mayor Singleton?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Cruz?
Just wanted to tell Mr. Winkler here, it's very impressive what they're doing out there as far as the clearing for the Twin Cities widening. My boys just had a blast for 30 minutes watching. On a different note, it's kind of interesting to see that such a small bird as a Seahawk could pick up a Bronco and carry it off. That's all.
They're mighty.
They're juiced. They're juiced. Thought that was a leeway.
Best Super Bowl ever. I also wanted to compliment everyone on the winter bird festival. It was really nice. I love those Wild Things guys, and apparently there was a really nice exhibit on birds too. And it was really, really very nice. I also want to encourage everybody to come out and run the marathon this Saturday for Tiny Smiles. If you don't want to run, and that would be someone like me, come on out, come out and volunteer, because they always could use volunteers. And to tell Barbara that I can't make the meeting tomorrow because I have another one, but I really would love to see a Galt dental come down here for kids. And if there's something that we can do to talk to the supervisors or anything, would you keep us posted?
Sure.
Okay, great. So, anything else, anyone? Steve? Okay, meeting's adjourned. Bye-bye.